Okay, moving, uh, call order please. Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Cattulo? Mr. Kozlowski?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher? Mr. Sutner?
Here.
Ms. Shields? She's on mute. Dr. Burks?
Here.
Alright, and then, can I have the leas?
We choose to follow up on the United States of America into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under a indivisible liberty and justice for all.
And then, uh, uh-
Yes, cultivating learners who apply skills and experiences to enrich society.
Thank you, Bob. Alright, we'll go right into student success and just, um, just, I want to let you know, Dr. Schumacher has to teach on Monday nights for the next two months, so he needs to, he apologizes. Uh, he's faced really up to date with everything, so I just want to let you know, he's not on purpose not here, but he's working. Okay, Bob, can you take over this committee?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Ashley says her sound is not working.
Sound work.
Perfect.
Our sound is working.
Yeah, hers is not.
Thumbs up.
Alright, so student success, and then first agenda item is we have the Curriculum Guide and Course Guide.
Uh, yes, this item is the annual item, Yorkville Middle School Curriculum and Course Guide, which describes for our families and communities, the academic service available for our rising seventh graders and eighth graders, inclusive of course selection process, the philosophies that we share as a district with regards to learning and grading, eligibility, special education services, advisory period, some of the advanced accelerated and high school credit courses that we have at our middle school, and also some elective course offerings as well. Couple of notes that I wanted to point out to the board. Number one was that there was a section that was added this year, which is unique to the 21-22 Curriculum Guide for the middle school. That is basically a clarifying statement on the topic of our learning models that are available or will be available next school year. This guide chose to have a, or I chose to have a disclaimer in this guide to avoid some confusion for the families. It's not intended to describe the learning model options of hybrid e-learning or full-time face-to-face in this particular document itself, because we have a committee that will be getting together and making the recommendations for the 21-22 school year with regards to our learning models available at the middle school. It will also be very beneficial for us this year, more than ever, to make sure that this document is very fluid. So, what we will be doing between now and approval is adding hyperlinks to the document that directs families to information on our website. That way, if we have to make a change, we can do so in real time, update one document, and have as much transparency as we possibly can for our families and for our communities. This is important for us to have this discussion in January, because at the end of January, our middle school staff is hosting some parent events that describes the transition for our current sixth graders and rising seventh graders from Yorkville Middle School. And so, it's important for us to have this documentation ready and available for families when they have those, those events and meetings. One thing that I would also like to point out is that we will have an addition to this document in March that will describe the eighth grade dual language courses that are available for our students. Those courses are not yet developed or ready, but they will be developed in March. And so, we will bring this back to the board and add that description also with that curriculum when that is completed. If you remember 2019, the dual language program approved, which was an approved program, that we were going to develop an eighth grade Spanish elective option, which the teams are working on now from the middle school. So, that will be another reason why it would be very important for us to be very fluid with this document and also have some live links that are attached to it.
So, Dr. Ball, how does that merge? I mean, or how are you thinking that's going to merge with these young people that have come up through the ranks now in dual language? And, and we're gonna have this Spanish credit course for high school. Is it only going to be that group that's gonna move into this? Or might there be others that could also? And will they end up being in the same class?
So, my preference would be to offer that course to any individual, regardless of whether or not they're into dual language, if they have a certain level of Spanish proficiency. So, they may have, um, they may be proficient in the Spanish language, but did not necessarily participate in our dual language program itself. And then, we would make that course available for those students. It will also help us, because this is an elective course, get as many students as we possibly can into the course, so it runs. What we would not want to have is a situation where many of the students did not choose the Spanish elective, and therefore, we didn't have enough students to run the course. Thus, we'd have to remove an opportunity for our kids. And so, my recommendation is that we expand it for any student that is proficient in Spanish to have the opportunity to take that course.
So, so that makes sense. But would all, all kids that have been in this system now automatically go into this?
It will be recommended, recommended, not required.
Just wondering why they wouldn't just be part of the flow of this whole thing.
It should be.
Should be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, why would you change it suddenly and say, "Well, now you can do it if you feel like it," even though you've been in this program now for seven years?
Yeah. The, what it would do, if we did make it recommended, not required, which is kind of the current process right now, it would not allow the students to take a different elective in their eighth grade year. And so, this would take up one of their two electives. And so, if we made this one a required elective for the dual language students, they wouldn't have the opportunity to take two electives of choice.
So, I mean, obviously, where that, that, that precludes it. I mean, they're in a system, and the idea is that by the time they leave here, they are fluent speakers.
Yes.
And why would you take the chance of stopping that process now? Just because they might not be able to pick up some other elective? They still can get an elective, they still have an elective open. And it's not like at high school, they would have other electives. So, I'm, I'm just curious, what, I don't understand the logic somehow I'm missing.
Well, that was, he was, this was what was approved in 2019. And so, the logic would be then, we would give students an additional elective. But I am open to any type of conversation about it, and I think it does make sense, to your point, after we did have them commit to a program, and that way, it would allow us then to more accurately plan and prep for that, knowing that the students must take the course.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see us-
I think, when we bring this back to you in March?
Yeah.
I think we'll have a lot more information and-
Flush it out a little bit.
You know, how many families do we even have that aren't interested in continuing? I'm assuming most, if not all, want to continue, unless you have other information, or otherwise?
No, I have not heard otherwise.
Yeah, so that's my, that's what I understand too. These are people that want to-
Great investments.
So, okay, so you'll bring that back in March with that as a possibility, or-
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we have an update in February?
Yeah.
We'll just bring it back to the board as we move through the conversations.
That's right, that's fine, that's fine.
This is really kind of first time of having those conversations, because boards are getting to this level.
Yeah, well, right, but you know, if, if you're planning now, and you're setting up your, your program, you want to know what, what's it gonna be. So, if all these, these young ones coming up that are in the program automatically go into the next Spanish level, it seems to make a lot of sense. But that's why I asked the first question, because this is gonna shift, you know, so that proficiency of the other student coming into that particular class could be difficult. You know, because you have grammar issues, even though they maybe need a speaker, you got some curriculum related to various types of literature that somebody may not- So, I could see where you might offer two different levels, where you might have one that's just a continuation of your present course, which is gonna be a different planning option. It's gonna be by these teachers involved in this whole thing along the way. And then, you may have one that's open, certainly, for people who contest into it, but just may not have the same background. Because it's, I mean, maybe you can merge it, I mean, it depends on how the teachers that are gonna do this feel, but I wonder if that might end up making it more difficult than necessary. So, those are the type of things that, you know, we can pick a look at.
Well, and it does make sense too, if we have, if we have it as a required course for the dual language students, we don't have to worry about filling the spots, and therefore, we can accurately staff for that in time force as well.
Right, 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 okay. Alright, so we'll hear more about this over the next month.
Yeah, we're also gonna be bringing back to the board, it's been a while since we have given a student, wrote an achievement update-
Right.
-from our dual language program.
Right, we talked about that.
From my camp, and we'll be working with the teacher learning department to say, you know, where these students were as a cohort over the years from first grade on.
Yeah.
Um, 'cause as we implemented dual language many, many years ago, it was, you know, the trajectory was, it was gonna be flat, 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 until it gets to the intermediate middle school level, and then you see the scores go up. So, we're gonna, we'll be bringing that to see where, where the programs come, and we need to make any adjustments, or what, what it means for the future.
Okay, and that makes sense, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, that, that's it.
No, and then Nick and I had some conversations earlier too, so I, what I was, was kind of just, with, with some logistical positioning.
Right, that will, that will, especially as we make modifications and change down the road. Thank you for that, of course.
Okay, so then we have some updates to board policies.
And these were, these were the policies that were placed on display at the December fourteenth Board of Education meeting, and we had gone over what those changes were and those recommendations of those policies. Nothing has changed since that, that conversation.
Okay, Nick, huh? Alright, and then we have other, um, Dr. Shipp, do you wanna, you know, kick this off? Or do you want me to?
Uh, if you wanna start, we can tag Kim in.
Okay, so, um, we've been, we've been actually talking since last spring, actually, probably even before last spring, about looking at an academic freedom policy. So, just wanted to let everybody know that I'll be working with Dr. Shipp, Rachel, her union leadership, to kind of craft this policy. It's really about protecting all of our stakeholders, first and foremost, it really is about protecting our teachers, ensuring our environments are safe and unbiased and driven by data. There's, there's an institutional level policy that we could potentially look at, there's a student policy, and then there's obviously the policy that protects the teachers. So, it's just a really healthy policy to have. It's just there to kind of supplement all the other policies that we have. The, the guidance, the kind of, the, the well-known guidance from this is from AADP that, that kind of provides the guidance for the policy, and it just kind of would be kind of that North Star as we collaboratively create policy. I'm sure some of the building leadership would want to participate in this, but it's just a really good, healthy policy to have on the books, um, as we continue to move forward. It's not that we're lacking in any way, it just strengthens our, it just strengthens the structures in place.
Yeah, when I saw your notes on this, I took a look at that. Yeah, and one other thing, just to make clear, it's not a carte blanche to say whatever you feel like. It is, it's gotta be driven by data, there's gotta be a reason for the conjecture, or, and it could be a, you know, policy that isn't necessarily something people, you know, approve of, but as long as there's truth and veracity to it, it's fine to, to move it forward. And, and that's always been the, since the Scopes Monkey Trial.
Yeah, it increases kind of the shared governance, collective ownership of that, and also ensures there's deep process from, again, all three of those important stakeholders as well, institution-wise, in the classroom, and then for the students as well.
Yeah, makes sense.
Right, it's, it's important for the public and for everyone listening tonight to know that this, the timing of it was not as a result of something that's going on in our nation, it's not a result of something any of our staff or students have, have done over the, the most recent days. It is merely just a beginning of a conversation. As the board's, one of your primary responsibilities, as you know, is, is to set policy and to discuss policy and create policy, which is what's gonna happen in a clever way moving forward with this. I, I have also reached out to, you know, our, our attorneys of work builder, K-12 districts, who have academic freedom policies in place. So, as just an example, I know certainly many of you who have worked at secondary levels or have been involved in other discussions around this are very familiar, so I think getting our union involved and working with the board administrators, I think it'll be a really wonderful discussion, and I think we'll get something that we're all very proud of and support moving forward.
Well, it's treating our, our staff as professionals-
Yes.
-and, and setting the proper structure in front of them, I think it's a great idea.
It really can lead to more intellectual conversations and can give, actually, more time and more freedom in the classroom for our staff and students to have these-
Oh, it should.
-these conversations.
That's actually was premise.
That is the first thing I thought when I saw that. Like, I was like, oh, this is gonna help everybody, as opposed to being thought it was something that looked negative. So, I think, I think it's a great stuff.
Right, it is not restrictive at all. But it does create healthy standards.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
That just helps.
Right, I think that's the key.
Okay, and then second on the list is kind of a follow-up, um, is, as you all know, Dr. Shipp has written letters to, to the one that's laid it to our leaders in the state regarding extracurricular activities. I'd like to then, um, ask the board if they would be interested in also writing a collective letter representing the whole board, and then ensuring that those letters are dispersed appropriately. So, any conversation on that, or, or is every, is everybody gave a consensus that we can finally forward on those letters?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Definitely.
Yeah, I, I, absolutely. I don't, and, and, and even if we have a particular board member, if we do, and I don't think we do, if we did, you just sign the names of those who support it, you know, and send it out, so, because, yeah, this has gotta, gotta move.
We've gotta get the kids involved in-
And Kim, I thought your letter was, was really well-written.
Very well-written, yeah, thank you.
Is there a, is there a process that, that you could, you want me to help orchestrate from the board's perspective as a starting point?
I can use your letter as a template, and then, if you guys are okay with it, as an FYI, send it off to review and for commentary, track takers.
Absolutely, that'd be a great idea.
And then, yeah, and then we could just-
It ain't, it ain't, we should get down that way too.
I'm assuming we're gonna get a pretty quick timeline with this then, 'cause we wanna get her out of, out the door.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we want.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think Dr. Shipp's letter as a template is what else you could have, so that would make sense.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Alright, so then moving on to any other updates?
One real quick, Dr. Bopson, just to give the board a little more clarity on the email I sent regarding the high school schedule on Thursday this week.
Yes, so, so the first semester has an odd number of days in the first semester, and with the Fox and the Den schedule, where students come to their full schedule over the course of two days, we found it necessary to make an adjustment to the schedule and have all students run through their eight-period schedule on Thursday, so no longer the odd number courses versus the even number of courses. And then, in that, we will be using it as a time to relearn and remediate some grades for students, so it won't be new learning that will take place during this day, but it will be relearning that will take place. We will also, we will be offering transportation on this day for students that we want to attend in person. All students are required to attend either virtually or in person. We'll also be issuing a survey to our students to see how many individuals will be here in person or do plan on actually coming to campus, to also give us an idea for transportation and for food services that we would provide, provide that day.
We're maintaining though the spacing and the distance rules that we've implemented all the way through, right?
Yeah, and that's why the survey is very much necessary, so we can really get an idea about how many students by class, by period, will be coming to, to the actual facility.
How are we gonna handle that if we exceed the number?
If we exceed the number, then what we'll have to do is we'll have to move spaces to, and for any particular class.
Okay. As long as you maintain the, the distancing and health standards, that's fine.
I don't, I don't, I think we're gonna have a lot of kids that are gonna be virtual.
Virtual.
Yeah, you're probably right, but just do this.
Make sure they have certification as well. Alright, and then, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to operational excellence, and we have updates on board policy.
Again, these are placed on display on the fourteenth, nothing has changed since.
I think the bigger one is the school year calendar, and that's pretty much all is what we talked about.
So, a lot of discussion actually around that too, as some of the bill, the bill that's right now getting reviewed about, I think they postponed it, but looking at the possibility on the road of that in fifteen days. I think they pulled that back right now temporarily-
Right.
-so nothing's gonna happen for immediate teacher, but I think it's a conversation that we'll see at the legislative level in the coming years.
Yeah, hopefully, not too many years, but yeah, it, uh, certainly, it's a direction we need to go.
Yeah, fifteen days.
At least.
Yeah. But that's been officially kind of postponed until next, until next where this-
Right, it was pulled out of recommendation.
Anything else on the board policy? And then, any committee updates?
Right, the shortest agenda we've ever had for, uh-
Just, oh, you're just in words.
From a, from a committee standpoint, I, I, Pete and Minnie and Mike, I've been meeting, I met with Minnie briefly before the meeting, they'll be coming back to the board at the end of the month with five-year projections, conversation on that, so they've been doing a lot of work.
How?
It's, we're excited to share, and certainly, I give credit to, to that group of really getting into the weeds line by line and getting a good sense of where we're gonna be, not only for next year, but, but down the road for two, three, four years. So, you expect that on the twenty-fifth, fourteenth.
Alright, good, and moving on to community of learners, and then the innovation project manager.
So, as I shared with the board as a draft, I was able to go out and, and search a lot of project manager job descriptions and tried to condense and, so I captured it in the three areas, project development, management, delivery, project presentations and events management, and then relationship management. I think what was interesting is I did more research too, was just from a, from a skill and development standpoint of these individuals, really that the project management professional certification seems to be a resounding area of, that, that people accept and really see as a, a credential that's essential for a position like this. Or they talk about the project manager, senior project manager certifications from a couple of different places I know. I actually looked around at different business schools that, that offer this as a strand, and you know, Dr. Burks is familiar with a number of them as well. So, it's, uh, if the board has any feedback as far as what I put together, certainly I'm open to suggestions. I'll bring it back to the twenty-fifth board meeting for final approval. But, you know, I, I am concerned a little bit about the timing of when to bring this person on. You know, if I think about approval on the twenty-fifth, posting, you know, it's, it's almost a, a spring break hire in the March, and sorry, in April, I don't know if the board has any thoughts around the timing of it. Is there any value in looking at a June hire, going into summer into the fall? I guess I'm, I'm open to discussion around that.
Well, yeah, I thought about that too, but I think the purpose of the project manager is to help prepare things for future usage. Yeah, sooner the better, you know, so it's not like it, it's a school year project, and it's all year long.
It is.
And a lot of your work, I know, is done in the summer and late spring, and they have somebody that's gonna work in this capacity to help you facilitate that is useful. So, the second half of this, and this position, I think, is essential. The second half is to take a look, yeah, at what I would call analyst position, and that's a lower level position than this one. Not that we don't need this one, because I think we do, but also someone else, 'cause this person can't do it all. You know, you can't, it's just like saying, all's that is replace, we're gonna make two people do everything instead of one, and that's not necessarily gonna work out either. Some are along the way, we have to take a look at how we analyze data at each level, you know, building levels, grade levels, and, and how do we have people in place that are going to put that data together in a succinct, easy way to understand, and it can be then fed into the system. So, that would be the next thing, you know, that's the board might like to see us look at, is to see it, because putting together all this data, getting it coordinated, having a person that's gonna flow between the different groups, that's how you're gonna get things done. And, and I think, and I commend you for doing this, thank you for following through, and I, I would look at possibly some other levels that wouldn't be quite as high as this, but, but would support it, you know, something to think about.
So, if you have, can I have that conversation, we started, um, and I think, you know, what's, what will be, what will take some time, and I'm not saying a hire, but internally, I think the board will probably understand this, is just how, how this individual is going to, and I spelled it out in the description, but flow between, you know, making sure that, you know, Ryan doesn't feel like, well, you know, I'm in charge of this project, I'm sorry to finish, but, you know, why, is this, you know, we bring somebody in, you know, to do the work of others, and, and I think it's, it's that learning curve with everybody to say, it's more of how this individual can support and look at, you know, look at the indicators and measures along the way, look at how we're gonna evaluate the effectiveness, look at how we're, we're tracking the timelines and deadlines, and, and if it's not replacing individuals-
Not at all.
-it's a support to our team. And I think that's gonna be important to, to help figure out how that, that flows in educational setting here, in K-12, 'cause it's not very common, as, as the board's a wall where-
Right, but then, the, the, every project has a sponsor, and the sponsors, that's me, go back to Ryan, it's still Ryan's project, he's the me, he's the sponsor, he's the thought leader. It's, it allows Ryan to get in a headspace that allows him to rethink, so he's not always worrying about the logistics.
All the details.
All the details, and, and then, it's, you get greater continuity with that as well. And then, knowing that, this should be music to everyone's ears, a part of archive data to ensure that new document was done, so it allows for continuous improvement. And that's a big piece of it as well.
Am I also correct? I mean, I've done a little bit of research on this, 'cause I, I really, I mean, I hadn't heard about it in education, and I really thought it was an interesting thing, and so I kinda looked into it. Do you see, uh, well, I guess, yeah, I, I could see how the biggest thing would be just the, the teachers kind of, or not the teachers, the, you know, people taking over the projects, uh, kind of, you know, it's got a, kind of, you know, they might have that feeling, but I don't think our, I don't think our employees in our district are like that.
I would use Ryan's as a example, everybody. 'Cause he's the only, he's, I was looking at him.
He was, he was-
I know what I thought, Amy.
Started out.
You know what I mean?
But no, I really, listen, I think it's a great idea, and I, I guess the main point I was getting to is, if I have read this correctly, it's also gonna take time, uh, you know, teachers are gonna have more time to focus on what they're doing in the classroom and not be pulled out for so many committees of reviewing data and stuff like that, that might, was that partially, uh-
I mean, I think it's-
That's where it should go.
So, I mean, that's gonna allow teachers to do their thing more, I, I just feel like it's gonna lead to a more, like, conducive, just, it's just gonna put, like, everyone's gonna be able to do their job a little bit better, 'cause you're gonna have someone tying up loose ends.
And because tools have become so sophisticated as well, these professionals have command over these sophisticated tools-
Yeah.
-as well, that allow things to also move more efficiently and more quickly. So, to Bob's point, we don't have to wait six years for something to go from concept to implementation.
Oh, yeah, so it's gonna get done way quicker. Way faster. And it gets to our kids quicker, and then we can move on to other stuff. Absolutely.
So, what we haven't finalized yet, which are ruled by the twenty-fifth, is just a, a range of time limitation, that's inevitable. So, I might, I might lean on a couple of board members just to get some feedback along the way before that timeframe, if that's okay. That'll bring us back to final approval on the twenty-fifth.
Alright, and very nicely done, I thought that was done.
It was, yeah, you did a lot of work on that.
Thank you.
Alright, update to board policy? Alright, update the board policies. So now we're putting.
This particular policy, there was just an update in the reference to, to the legal reference to school code.
Okay. So no action, right, Frank?
Correct.
Alright, and then any other updates or information?
No, please.
Alright, going on to the new business, and then we have some hires. So you don't wish.
Motion to approve the co-curricular hires as presented, second.
Moved in second, additional discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields? And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Then we have some resignations.
One, one thing to note under the resignations, the fourth person on there, we had hired them at the previous board and then they declined the position after the fact and failed to give us a resignation other than the verbal declining.
Motion to approve the resignation as presented, second.
Moved in second, additional discussion, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any votes, motion passes, then we have a transfer.
Motion to approve the transfer as presented, second.
Moved in second, additional comments, roll call please.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. And then last, we have some hires.
Motion to approve the hires as presented, second.
Moved in second, additional discussion, roll call please.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Alright, anything else?
Executive session.
We have an executive session, so we need that motion read.
Alright. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodge against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, 5 I L C S 120 slash 2 C 1, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives, 5 I L C S 120 slash 2 C 2.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kozowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
And Dr. Burks?
Yes. Alright, and we will have, we will have, we should have action.
Motion, there will be a motion.
Alright.